Just as a reminder to the candidates, you do have the first two minutes. I'm going to ask you to both introduce yourself, a little bit about your experiences, your interest in the school board position on the board, but then also what would be your top two priorities? And if you specifically throughout the panel identify another candidate, I will allow that candidate out of the bubble. And so he does 60 seconds. You will have a closing one minute at the end as well to identify anything that has not been said tonight. So we will begin so that we can get all of your input. We appreciate all of the candidates who are going for public office. It's a demanding kind of field for people and we really appreciate your interest in doing that. So I will start this way with Emily. And the first question is summarize your personal background and experience and why are you running for office? And then your top two priorities if elected to the Foley School Board.
All right. Good evening. My name is Emily Lashinsky and I am running for the two-year school board seat. I've supported Foley School District as a community member and a parent for 14 years. And I feel very fortunate to be part of a community with a strong commitment to education and our students. I am a current board member. I was appointed in July to fill an open seat and have received the Minnesota School Board Association's Leadership Development Certificate. Throughout my career, I've been fortunate to be able to work with districts from across the nation of all different sizes. And I'm excited to leverage this knowledge to make informed decisions to support the children in our community and continue the good work of our district. I'm passionate about education and doing what I can to positively impact student achievement and help all children reach their potential. If elected, I will continue my commitment to our students, teachers, and the community, ensuring our district continues its path towards increased student achievement and providing all students equitable access to learning and the support they need to reach their potential. In order to do this, we need to provide support for our teachers. Study after study has shown that educators have a critical impact on student achievement and it's essential they have the resources, tools, guidance, and support they need to be effective. Finally, as a board member, I take my position as a representative of the community seriously. I'm not afraid to voice concerns and have meaningful discussion. And I remain committed to listening and balancing the needs of the community, our students, and our district. Thank you.
Georgia, do you need to repeat the question?
Sure.
Okay. Summarize please your personal background and experiences, why are you running for office as well, and include your top two priorities for the Foley School Board.
Hello. My name is Georgia Halaba and I am running for the Foley Public School District's 51th School Board. I have three adult children and five grandchildren. I have instilled the importance of education into my children. My son Glenn is a warrant officer in the United States Army and my daughter Rachel is a urology nurse at St. Cloud. My daughter Crystal resides at home with my husband and myself and we continue to take care of her while her needs progress. My husband and I are retired dairy farmers and my husband also retired from the laborers union. I continue to work as a PCA and I have always been an advocate for children. I graduated from St. Cloud Technical College under the Developmental Needs Program. I worked in the Foley Public School System for 10 years, working closely with teachers to meet all children's needs. I also volunteered as a Little League softball coach, Girl Scout leader, and Sunday School teacher. I also served on the Benton Stern Special Ed Board and the Foley Inclusion Task Force. I believe that now is the time to get more involved in our community and in our school district. So therefore, I am running for School District 51 School Board. I will speak up for all children and their needs while keeping in mind the budget. I also believe that the staff plays a huge part in their education, that we need to listen to the staff and also their needs. My goal is to put our children first. My promise to you is I will listen first, I will keep an open mind, I will educate myself on the subject from all sides, and I will put in the time to do the job right. And the two things if I'm elected, they kind of fall hand in hand, would be safety and mental health issues within the school district and community.
Thanks. Candy?
Good evening. I'm Candy Jansen and I am born and raised from the Foley community. I graduated in class of 98. After high school, I went on to receive my bachelor's degree in business and then my master's degree in managerial leadership. After college, I worked in the higher education sector for 11 years. For those years, I served as a campus director in which a lot of the things that I was challenged on a day-to-day basis, I would say are not the same but similar or parallel to some of the obstacles that you face in the K-12 system. With that being student learner outcome assessments and ensuring that students are receiving academic achievement, that their career readiness and they're ready for a successful future, preparing them to be community-minded service leadership, as well as technology in the classroom. And the most time I spent was focusing on school safety and ensuring that not only my students but my faculty and staff were safe every day when they came to work and to school. Outside of my higher education experience during that time, I also owned and operated a small business within our community here. I did that with my husband for 12 years and we turned a very failing business into a very successful business. And I believe that that's one of the skill sets that will make me a successful school board member is because those entrepreneurs or small business owners have to think outside the box and be creative and make things happen on a limited resource. And I'll bring those same skills to the school board. In addition to these, I now work in sales and marketing and healthcare industry. I also am on the Board of Projectors for the Indy Foundation, which is a local nonprofit organization. I've served on the Board of the Foley Area Community Foundation for four years as well as the Archery Foundation fundraising. And why I want to be on the school board is because I believe in Foley. I believe that education is the key to success for anybody who takes opportunities that it affords to them. As a school board member, I promise you that I will put the students at the forefront of all decisions, ensuring that academics, safety, and career readiness are priorities, as well as being accountable to the taxpayers.
Thank you. Appreciate it. And now Becky?
My name is Becky Howard. I am married and my husband's name is Tom Howard. We have four adult children and three granddaughters. I am a 1984 graduate of Foley High School. I also have an accounting degree. I'm currently finishing my second term as a school board member. I was elected in 2002 to 2006. We had some family concerns and I took a break and then I was re-elected the last time I ran. I've had all phases of board training that MSBA offers. I was board chair last year. I'm president of the Foley Area Foundation and treasurer of the Foley Booster Club as well. All four of my children also graduated from Foley High School, as did my parents. For the top two priorities, student achievement is huge for me. Just recently, we put some intervention programs in place with the hiring of two intervention teachers. Also looking to do some further professional development for our staff here to certainly increase student achievement and look at all data that's offered to us in those categories. Also, another priority I would have was to maintain our current financial stability. I'm conservative in nature. I do understand my fiduciary responsibility with taxpayer money being on school board. However, I'm open-minded and if something makes sense to me, I'm for it. And I also understand I'm one voice of seven. Thank you.
Nathan, do you need the question asked?
Oh, good. Thank you. Hello everyone. Thank you for coming. I'm Nathan. Sorry. I'm Nathan Anderson. I'm a father of four future and current students here at Foley in the Foley School District. I've been a resident, a property owner, also a volunteer within our students. I've been coaching baseball teams, basketball teams, and currently the president of the Basketball Association. One of my, you know, so I look at my motivation. So I look at the importance of education as being kind of the current thing that a community can do for its children. Inside of the school districts today are faced with many challenges, challenges in which we need to find solutions for. I think today, more than ever, school districts need strong school board members that are able to help navigate through some of these challenges, figure out how to actually identify and work together and create solutions. Look at my priorities. First off is going to be school safety. I believe that the Foley School District has already done a good job in getting started and implementing some safety programs. I believe there's opportunities for us to continue to expand upon that. If we look out, look out, look at other school districts and identify where we have, where they have success and if they have best practices, I think we can create a long-term plan that can both be sustainable and yet effective at increasing the overall safety in our school districts. The faculty and staff of the Foley School District are really the ones that are delivering the educational experience of our children. I think it's important for us to realize that they, whether they're teaching in a classroom, coaching in a field, or providing the transportation for our students, they need the resources, tools, and education or training that they need to perform their job at the highest level. And of course, everything would need to be done in a balanced way, looking at the fiscal responsibility and making sure that we're working waste on the system while at the same time making sure that we're utilizing all of the taxpayers' dollars to the full effect. Thank you.
Good evening. I want to start by thanking the Foley Chamber and Quanis Club for hosting this event this evening. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Stephanie Rudnitsky. I'm originally from Sauk Rapids and I've been part of the Foley community for almost 15 years. My husband John was born and raised in the Foley community. And based on where we live, we had the opportunity to choose whether our kids went to the Foley School or the Sauk Rapids. I'm definitely one of those people that does a lot of research and looks at a lot of different things. What I admired about Foley was the small classroom sizes, the small community feel. Sauk Rapids has changed a lot over the last 20 years. So I'm very grateful in our decision to choose Foley. My husband and I have three children currently in the district. Our oldest Cole is an eighth grader and enjoys football, wrestling, and baseball. Our daughter Adeline is a sixth grader. She is actually currently one of the junior ambassadors and enjoys dance, basketball, and being part of student council. Dominic is our creative fourth grader and also enjoys wrestling and softball. I am the oldest of three children and grew up in a single-family home. I knew from little on that I wanted to be a nurse and I pursued that degree right out of high school. I went to St. Cloud State and then became a registered nurse in 2004. In addition to being a nurse, my husband and I also own a small business. I've been involved in various leadership roles in the community, both personally and professionally. I was president of the Foley Biz2Biz group for two years, which is a networking group of small businesses. And I also helped launch the Sauk Rapids Biz2Biz group. I'm also involved in my church. And when my kids were little, I did a, I was a discussion group leader for a MOPS group. I've led Bible studies in the past and currently lead a community women's group at New Lake Church. My decision to run for school board is based on being an advocate for people. Ever since I was little, my role as a leader started at a very young age by taking care of my siblings. So it's definitely something that has been my passion. I've been able to be involved in my kids' education through volunteering in the classroom.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Moving on then to Patrick.
I'm starting my timer.
Yes. And if you don't know, Holly is doing the timing for me. So shall we wait for five minutes or five seconds?
Five seconds. I'm Patrick Levenduski. I think pretty much, almost everyone in this room probably knows my mom, Virginia Levenduski, who taught in the district for what seems like probably a lifetime. It's her birthday, by the way, this week, so we see her, say happy birthday. As for me, I've lived here my whole life, 38 years in the community on the same family farm, right? I married a woman I met at a speech meet in middle school. She was from Malacca. We'll let her slide. And we have four wonderful kids. My stepson Ian is on the cross-country team. You can see his name up on that blue paper over there. I have a first-grade daughter named Jenny and I have a almost five-year-old Verity and then a two-year-old son, Peter. And so I've got kids all through the district and I want to get involved now because I don't want to be the person that's like, "Oh, it's too late. You know, Mike goes back..." "I wish I would have known about that thing. I could have fixed it." Right? When my kids are almost done. I want to be there now. So I'm involved, so I know what's going on. So if there is something that's coming up that I could affect for the better, I can do it now while my kids can benefit. So why me? Well, I'm a former college professor. I taught for five and a half years at an arts college in Dinah. In fact, I was chair of the visual arts department, which was responsible for half the school. So that means I have education administration experience, which is exactly what this position is. I'm accustomed to monitoring students, monitoring budgets, looking at curriculum, all those things. That's what I did for five and a half years, especially with student success, which is a big piece of what we're interested in. There's two points I want to hit. First, last week at the school board meeting and we got data for the year, kind of like where we rank and everything. And it's safe to say that Foley is one of, if not the, best school in the area. And that is amazing. We have the data to prove it. And we have some very specific areas for growth, right? There's always room for improvement. But the first stat that jumped out at me is that our biggest gap is between reduced or free lunch and non-reduced. Or in other words, low-income families and the rest. And this is a gap that we're challenged with closing. Statistically speaking, low-income families tend not to have as much time to spend with their kids because either they're working later shifts or two jobs or they might even just be a single-parent household. So I would propose some very simple things we can do on the chief to help alleviate that.
And then finally Kevin?
Hello. Good evening. My name is Kevin Anderson. I am running for a two-year term for the Foley School District. Actually, I was born and raised in San Diego, Minnesota. I've been there all my life. I graduated from Princeton High School. I am a single father of two children, one in 10th grade. And then I have a senior at Foley High School as well. I am very active with my children. My number one priority is my children with their education and for them to proceed with their education. I've been in the kids ministry for 24 years. I am a down-to-earth kid myself. Whatever the kids have in their lives that I'm more focused on, on the kids. I'm more of a kids, people, people. Actually, I have 30 years of actually building trusses and trust manufacturing. 24 years in the kids ministry. I have served as a para-professional at the Princeton School District. And as well as I'm actually, I'm employed here at the Foley School as well as a para. I work with the special, special needs children. I think those kids are more special than anybody else. My main focus is trying to, you know, just kind of help out the teachers and all their needs when, because they work hard. You know, I'm there to, you know, give them a hand, you know, give them to support what they need and, you know, basic communication is number one. Hopefully, we can have the community step up to help out the school district just to, you know, to partner with the school as well.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Kevin. And now we're going to reduce the time down to a minute or even 30 seconds for the next couple of questions. And so I'm going to also mix things up. And this time I'm going to start with Nathan so that we kind of have a little bit of blend. The question came from the audience, two different questions that combined for a minute. What do you plan to do to enhance school safety? And would you be in favor of arming teachers or school staff as a means of safety? Starting with Nathan.
Okay. So I'll take the first part of that question on. Look at what additional can we do in terms of school safety? And I think there's a couple of things that come to mind. First and foremost, I think that we had talked, the group before us had talked about like a resource officer. And I think, well, it's a good step. I believe that's actually a reactive piece of it, right? I think if you look more at the proactive side of it, I think bolstering our mental health kind of evaluation and support that we have for that portion of it from like a psychologist standpoint and helping people that are kind of struggling with the challenges that are faced and just kind of growing up in general, right? I think that's a great place to start. I think some other things we can do from like more of a physical structure standpoint or how we can actually protect the school would be to put up, put up some barriers around the school in terms of like, to limit like the ability to like drive directly in to the building itself potentially. Make sure that we got safe exits, safe crosswalks that kind of help move people around.
Thank you. Stephanie?
Safety is my top priority. And in addition to looking at the physical building safety, I would have to say, you know, addressing the root of oftentimes what causes there to be issues with safety. So that would go hand in hand with your question about teachers being armed. I'm not necessarily in favor of that. I believe that people need to have resources and things like that available. So just looking at that morsel, what can we do as a district to help these kids? You know, what is going on? And just move in that direction.
Thank you. Patrick?
Knowing many teachers, having been a teacher, never would I harm a teacher. Just it's not in the wheelhouse of the teacher. Most of the ones I know wouldn't be practical. As far as things we can positively do for safety, you know, I think the safety officer is a good start again. I think we all agree to that. But one for three schools, I would say maybe we need at least two, even though we're a clustered school, I think that's not a bad idea. I think, again, mental health and just showing support to students. If we're worried about student shooters rather than random people, I would say maybe we should look at some sort of student advising program at the faculty where every faculty member has a group of students they advise. They meet with them. They are become their support system. It's kind of like a homeroom, but maybe not a homeroom. Maybe not like a class, but just meeting with students. Find the faculty to forge the bonds. It's a lot harder to be violent to people you have an emotional bond to in a positive way.
Thank you, Kevin.
I think number one would be safety with the schools, you know, especially with all these, actually with all these school shootings. And number one is, you know, all your parents want your children to come to school safe and go home safe. And number one, keeping the kids safe from gun shooting. Social media is the biggest thing too, you know, blocking, you know, blocking pornography out of the social media. And just, you know, just keeping them, you know, accountable. Like I said, I've been a para at the Princeton School District and the Foley District and, you know, you know, keeping strangers out from the school and, you know, keeping a close eye on each and one of the students. You know, that's the main priority. And I think, you know, education, you know, they want to come to school and learn and just enjoy it. Enjoy it. So thank you.
Now Emily?
All right. When it comes to safety, it is so important to make sure that our students feel supported and safe all the way from the early elementary years. And that includes making sure that the teachers are trained to create a supportive environment and not let any students slip through the crack. It's also important that we create a safe school environment that starts with the safe, secure entrances. There already is one in the high school and the intermediate school. And it's important that we continue that trend and secure the elementary school entrance as well. The school resource officer is also a great step in the right direction. And more than just reacting to any events or disciplinary items that may come up in the schools, it's going to be important to get that officer in the classrooms and helping to teach about drugs and other things that are coming up in the community to help keep our students safe and aware of what's going on in the community.
Thank you. Georgia?
As far as the guns with teachers, I at this point would not feel comfortable with that. Teachers are trained to teach along with many other jobs that get put into their labs. I think the hugest issue with our safety, you know, not only in our country, but it can happen right here in Foley, Minnesota, that we need to be proactive and start getting some things into place, looking for early warning signs with children, troubled children. How are we responding to crises? And I know that there's drills here. They're working on getting an officer in this school district, which I think is a very good idea. Just having someone in our school district that the kids can go talk to, I think are good ideas with your lockdown procedures. Just having all of that training for the staff and for the students.
Thank you. Yeah, Candy?
I believe that there are several things that we could do as a district to increase the safety of our schools. One of those is really focusing on mental health support for our students. And I would like to advocate for the school to have several people certified in mental health first aid. These people are trained to find early warnings or detect early warning signs, work through crisis intervention, and help students to be successful or to improve before they have any type of break. And I feel like if we can start there, that will mitigate some of the safety issues internally. I also feel like that we should continue to look at facility needs and determine what we can do to ensure or enhance our school's safety. And then from there, we need to look at doing additional training, training of staff, students, families, as well as our community members. Collaborate together, do drills, create student leader groups that will also be trained to understand and recognize things that are at risk or should be flagged to leadership. I also believe it's important that we focus on communication to the community. In relation to arming our staff, I do not feel like that is an appropriate step.
Okay. Thank you. And Becky?
Okay. I would definitely be moving forward with our community resource officer. I feel that the job and duties of that officer would be varied and would be very much an educational add-on to our current staff. As far as arming school staff, that would need to be researched to the nth degree before I would consider that, especially going forward with the community resource officer. We've recently enhanced our entrances to both the high school and the intermediate school at the start of this school year. So that increased our security measures here in our whole campus. And also to be proactive, to move forward with the Alice training, to give our students and staff the power of education and skills to help ourselves if a security situation were ever breached or if we ever were into a circumstance like that. You know, lockdowns are kind of a thing of the past and moving forward with new ways.
Thank you. And now we're going to try a 30-second question from the audience. And we'll start with Stephanie and just move on. 30 seconds. Do you favor or approve a school voucher program? And give your reasons. And I would start with you, right?
I'm not familiar enough with that. A question.
No problem. Patrick?
Here's the thing about that. Literally last week, we got the data ranking our school in our academics and everything else compared to the local area schools as well as schools in our conference, so other schools similar size. A voucher program makes no sense for this area. If you wanted to get an education at the level of what Foley Public Schools provides, anywhere else you'd have to go to a private school. So a voucher here makes no sense because first of all, the only next private school other than St. John's for middle school other than St. John's after, for middle school, for high school, you'd have to be going to St. Cloud or somewhere else, which is a whole transportation issue. Secondly, it's a public school, right?
Thank you, Patrick. Thirty seconds, go by fast. Kevin?
Actually, to be honest with you, the question is a little bit difficult. I do agree with Patrick. You know, you know, the kids are coming in here to learn their education, they're, they're studying to get their credits and their credentials for college and they want to proceed to move on in life and, you know, for them to receive a voucher for, you know, you know, for school. I think, you know, have them to, you know, just have the great education that they can in the high school and in the, in a middle school and elementary, so.
Thank you. And Emily?
Well, I'm not a huge fan of voucher programs. I do think school choice is very important to make sure that each student can be in a place where they can be successful and feel supported. And Foley School District is a phenomenal district and we, we're often receiving students in more than we lose, so I don't think we have to worry if we had a voucher program that students would be going off to, that we would lose a lot of students to a private schools, but it is important that stu-, people can have their own choice.
Thank you. Georgia?
I actually do not know any information on the voucher program, so I would have to educate myself on that before I could answer a question like that.
Candy?
I guess I can. I am not as familiar with the voucher program either. Sorry, I'm not as familiar with the voucher program either, but from kind of what I'm hearing, it sounds like students are going to other districts and taking, I'm guessing, taxpayer funds with them, so while I do recognize and support student choice, I necessarily wouldn't be happy to lose tax fund, taxpayer dollars here.
And Becky?
I would not be in favor of school voucher system, potentially taking our taxpayer money and going, going elsewhere. I don't even know that would be a factor here. We get so many more open enrolled students than students leaving our district.
Thank you. And Nathan?
I would, I, I agree with the concept of choice. I believe that people should have the choice to be able to move where they want to. With that being said, I believe Foley is a school district that would be as a magnet and we probably should benefit more from a voucher program than what we would lose.
Starting in with Patrick, this question also for 30 seconds. What do you see as the achievement gap at Foley, Foley Schools, and what do you think is the best way to close that gap? Came from the audience.
According to the data that we were provided at last week's meeting, the biggest gap of what we're measuring is between low income and non-low income students. I think we have a lot we can do with that, but I think my first proposal would be to get an after-school program for these kids. Number one thing low-income kids don't have usually is someone to spend time with them. We have a facility and I think we have a pool of potential volunteers where we could have an after-school one, one day a week where people, where kids come in and perhaps volunteer retired teachers, listen to them, read, reach them, help them with homework and just interact with them for three hours a week and I think we can pull it off and achieve.
Kevin?
I think, I think basically having more, more after-school activities is very important. I, I have served as, they actually have basically did a club master and, and then I've been a assistant, actually a boy scout master as well. And, you know, there's activities out there outside of school, but I think there should be more, more school activities involved so they can, you know, you know, get in the, you know, their activities as well. I know there's a lot of popular kids out there that always starts in football, always starts in wrestling.
Thank you, Kevin. And moving on to Emily?
So the biggest gap in achievement in our district is between those students who are receiving free and reduced lunch and those who are not, so it is definitely an income disparity. The top way that I feel is important to close this achievement gap is by identifying early warning indicators, by catching these kids early and putting them into tier one, two or three interventions. We recently hired interventionists, which is a great start towards closing this achievement gap.
And Georgia?
Just getting the children involved in after-school activities and I know a lot of times money is an issue for these parents and we do have, I believe not grants, but some other ways of, if they get reduced lunch, they can get a discount on some of those programs too. And we have the big brother and sister programs, I think that helps a lot, but we're still not reaching everybody in the middle and we need to reach out to those children and see if we can't get them more involved in school activities.
Thank you. And Candy?
I would like to look at the achievement gap with students who are non-university or technical college speaking students. Oftentimes these students do come from ones who aren't engaged in these school activities or extracurriculars and they fall between the cracks. Right now the state of Minnesota has a multitude of technical skilled jobs out there that provide gainful employment. I think that the school district could look at partnering, collaborating, doing some apprenticeships with different industries to help these students find gainful employment that has pensions and benefits and provide them with a opportunity to earn a great living and a self-care.
Thank you. And Becky?
The achievement gap is definitely financial for those students qualify for free and reduced lunch. How to have a workaround for this and, and help solve this would be complete early intervention. We've just recently had, had an addition of intervention teachers that are totally dedicated to these programs, that is their job in the school. When students are referred to an intervention, intervention teacher, that's who they are with, those students solely. So we're definitely on top of this concern and we're putting resources toward solving this achievement gap.
And Nathan?
I would say this achievement gap comes down to two things, right? One is us building up programs from a support standpoint, giving the kids the attention that they need. And the second thing is making sure that as we continue to move towards a technology, technological based programs from an educational standpoint, that those children have access to those, those facilities, they have a way to get into a computer or whatever they need for their schoolwork.
And Stephanie?
I think we all agree that the achievement gap is based on income. I would say in addition to the interventionists within the district, I would say reaching out to community, looking at different businesses to partner with, even, you know, after-school things, you know, Girl Scouts, the Foley Ambassador Program, having those kinds of resources and information out there for kids that do want to get connected that maybe are not involved in sports or different other extracurricular activities.
Thank you. I am going to squeeze in one more 30 seconds before your closing comments, it came from the audience, so I can't resist. What is the process or procedure that you recommend Foley schools to regarding bullying in or on school property? And this time I'm going to start with Candy.
I'm sorry, we've heard one.
What is the process or procedure in dealing with bullying in or on school property?
So the school has zero tolerance for pol-, for bullying and I believe that the school handles it well on school property and I think that it also needs to be looked at off of school property. Unfortunately, we live in a cyber-based world and social media is out there and kids have a lot of means and, and different ways to bully outside of the classroom or outside of the buses. And so I think it's important for the school to educate, train and help students in understanding and reporting bullying.
And Becky?
Procedure for, for bullying, if there is an incident, it is thoroughly investigated. And also as Candy said, cyberbullying is real, it's out there, it happens and that, that's hard on, on students as well. So there are many different forms of bullying. Our staff is very well-trained on, on the topic and students know that they can go to any staff within any of the buildings for help.
Nathan?
I think there's two different approaches to the bullying standpoint. I think the zero tolerance, making sure that you aggressively discipline when the bullying happens is one way to handle it. The second way would be to continue to build communities inside of the school, make the children be members of, members of each other, friendships, develop that. Again, you'd probably be less likely to bully somebody that you have respect for.
Stephanie?
Absolutely no tolerance for bullying. I would say, you know, when it is addressed, you know, making sure that students are being accountable for it, involving parents and also just educating, you know, having people come in and share stories and testimonies of how it's, you know, impacted their life. I know even getting into sex trafficking, St. Cloud is one of the top cities of that. I mean, that is something that's an eye-opener for a lot of folks. So I think education, just getting to the root of that.
Patrick?
As a guy who quit cross-country because of the bruises he received, I'm very familiar with bullying and I think the biggest solution to bullying is love. You gotta tell people they're loved, but you also need to say if someone's bullying, you need to call them out on it. Teachers are going to be doing it, there's so much more vigilant now, we just need to increase our vigilance. And again, the mental health stuff, get the bullies into the mental health people, get, give them that faculty advisor, give them those emotional bonds, give them the love.
Kevin?
Actually, actually I think, I think bullying is, 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 is one of my top priorities as well in, in the school. You know, actually the kids need, need the love and attention by adults because, you know, you don't know what's happening in their home life and when they come to school, you know, they want to be safe, they want to be loved and, you know, we just, we just have to, you know, you know, make sure that, you know, the kids come here that they're not bullied, you know, and if there is bullying around, you know, it, it needs to be stopped immediately because that's why there's dropouts.
Thank you, Kevin, appreciate it. And Emily?
So I firmly believe in our zero tolerance policy, but in addition to that, I am a, a big supporter of our anonymous tip line as well. It gives students a way to call in and not only give tips, but kind of a safe way to share that bullying may be happening that they're aware of. And that has been a huge benefit for our district. And also educating the staff to spot it and providing a really supportive school environment to try to eliminate the bullying as much as possible.
And Georgia?
Again, I, I think that this falls under the mental health issues that we're facing in today's community. Minnesota has the fourth worst student council ratio in the country. That means that only one in five children that need services are getting it. And I think we need to take a good look of how, look at how these children are coming about to school and bullying other children, what can we do to get that to stop? Maybe having some services available to help these kids get through and then also the children.
Appreciate it. And now for our final minute with each of the candidates, we're going to start at Kevin right on the end and go to Patrick and all of them this way. For your last minute here, why are you the best candidate for the school board? And is there anything else you want to tell us about yourself or your views?
I think, I think I would probably be a, a great candidate for the next two years because I'm a, I'm basically a down-to-earth guy. I, I have the, the heart and passion with the, with the children. I take, take my time. I'm very active with my, my children, my, myself. I, I've served in the community as a club master in Boy Scouts and, and, and I just, you know, I think, I think I would be, would be an awesome candidate. I'm very warm-hearted, really sensitive and caring and, and, you know, I take, I don't take things lightly, but I am, you know, I'm not an aggressive person, but, but if, if you consider me for the next two years, that would be, would be a wonderful, would be a wonderful blessing. Thank you.
And Patrick?
I'm going to point out one thing. Everyone else up here is some sort of business person or educator, something like that. I'm the only artist. I'm a working artist, I have been for 20 years, but I've also been an educator. I'm the only person up here that has both administrative and in-the-classroom experience with education, which means when we're talking about all these problems, we're often talking about communication. I've worked in marketing, I've worked as members of these disparate groups, I understand how to communicate with people. I would propose that we look at our communications. When I met with the board this summer, they said their number one problem they felt was communication. I'd said, "Let's do an audit of our communication techniques, let's find out where are our audiences?" They said, "Communication between administration and staff and the public and staff and everybody." Everyone was not communicating. "Let's take a look at our techniques, let's figure that out. Everything we're talking about, if we can communicate better, bullying, safety, budgets, any of these topics tonight, all of some better communication techniques can do a lot better. Why are we not webcasting our school board meetings? Please vote for me."
Thank you, Nathan. And Stephanie?
As a wife, mom, nurse and small business owner, I would be honored to, like my background and experience, to positively impact the physical, social, emotional and financial needs of our district. I do not come to the board with an agenda. My role as a board member would be to be a liaison between the school district and the community and make decisions based on what is best for students and citizens. I would oversee the budget, curriculum, staff and facilities. One school board member cannot do the job alone. It takes wisdom, collaboration, clear communication and a strong vested interest in the success of all students in the district. Thank you for your time.
And Nathan?
When I, when I first set out on this journey to become a school board member, I thought about why. And I, I came back to, you know, how did Foley become a great school district to begin with? And it was all the people before me that came, that put time in and to really thought about the issues and came up with creative solutions. That's what I wanted to do. I want to, I want to use my experience, what I've done in the course of the business world, but really to establish a sense of teamwork, collaboration, not just with our school board here today, but with other, other schools across the area, identify what those best practices are, figure out how we can continue to be best in class in what we do. You know, the next, the next generation of our children really relies on what we do today and how we're going to continue to impact and grow. The, the school today is great. We have to make sure we have to figure out a way to continue to be great for the next 20, 30, 50 years.
And Becky?
I'm a very passionate and involved school board member. I'm on many committees and I've partaken in many, many trainings and conferences that are offered to school board members at this time. I do a lot of question asking and I do a lot of research. I absolutely love being part of the school board and our great school system. I'm proud to serve our community and our students. I feel I bring experience both from being a current and past school board member, I have a lot of history and I also have a lot of experience, I've worked for 12 years in the St. Osborn district in the human resource office. I know the ins and outs of contracts, I know the ins and outs of negotiations and staffing situations. I feel I have a good understanding of our district, both financially and academically and would be absolutely privileged to continue to serve in this capacity. I'm approachable, I feel I add value and again, would be honored to be re-elected. Thank you.
Candy?
I would like to be your school board representative because I believe in Foley. I believe in this community and I am extremely passionate about education. I've worked a majority of my adult life working in education to help people achieve their goals. I would bring my combined community leadership, my professional background to the school board, which I think would be an asset. I promise as a school board member that I will keep students at the forefront of all decisions that are made, ensuring their academic needs, social needs, extracurriculars, safety, career readiness and future success are always at the front of mind. I'll be accountable to the taxpayers to ensure that we are fiscally responsible and I will continue to network with students, staff, parents, taxpayers to ensure that I'm aware of what's important to them, what they think it needs improvement and changes. I promise to serve this community wholeheartedly and I would appreciate your vote.
Georgia?
First of all, I'd like to thank the Foley Chamber of Commerce and Gloria and Holly for putting this together tonight. It's such a privilege to be surrounded by such talented individuals. I kind of was in panic mode when I read the list of people that were running for school board and then I took a step back. for school board, and then I took a step back, knowing most of the people that are running here, some since birth, and I think even if I were to lose, I would win, and so would you, because most of the people up here tonight would do a fabulous job. It's kind of a win-win situation for everybody in our school district. Um, my goal myself is to put the children first and make our schools better. Um, I promise to you that I will listen first, I will keep an open mind, I will educate myself on the subject from all sides, and I will put the time in to do the job right. Thank you.
And Emily?
Thank you for coming out tonight and listening, and thank you in advance for voting. I feel fortunate to be part of a community, uh, with a strong commitment to education and our students. Um, over the past twelve years, I've been fortunate to be able to work for, um, an organization that's focused on education, and I've been able to work with districts of all sizes from across the nation. And now I want to take that experience, um, and use it to, um, inform my decisions and help the students here, um, in our community. Uh, I'm honored to be a current board member and look forward to the opportunity, um, to leverage my experience to continue to, uh, serve, listen, and balance the needs of the students, district, and the community.
Thank you. Can we give a round of applause to all the candidates?